Okay, I think we're ready, Robert.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and call the meeting, I guess. I'm not sure how to do that, but okay. Good morning. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to call, so we're doing it a little bit different because we do have a majority of our board members in attendance. We do have to go through some protocols here, and it's just to call the special meeting of the Board of Directors to order for today, May 17th. And it is a Colorado River Water Conservation Program Workshop. And with this, we have our Assistant General Manager, Robert Ching, who will be making the presentation for you today. I will just make note of those board members that are in attendance for the record. We do have the ability for public comment. Members of the public, whether in person or via Zoom, we do have about 14 attendees via Zoom. So if at any time those attendees would like to provide some comment, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom, and we will call on you in the order that you raise your hand. And I will go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Ching.
Thanks, Elia, and thank you for the good turnout this morning. Appreciate the, you know, the level of interest. And hopefully, you know, in the next hour or so, you know, we'll go through a brief presentation, kind of, you know, kind of talking about what we're thinking about, you know, for the conservation program. And then, you know, like to hear from the audience what your thoughts are. So anyways, if we could maybe advance it to this slide, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Was there any public comments?
Not at this time.
Okay, great. Okay, I guess with that, we can move on to the actual presentation. And I guess before I get started, there's some materials in the back. The presentation will be uploaded, I think, to our website after this, this meeting. But there's hard copies in the back with the agendas and everything. So, you know, if you don't have one, if you like one, you know, so you can follow along a little easier, by all means, please feel free to grab one. So what I'd like to discuss today is what we're kind of envisioning for the Colorado River Water Conservation Program. And really, the goal of the program is to demonstrate decreased water use, you know, in '22 and '23. And I'll talk about why these two years are important here in a minute. I just want to emphasize, and you'll hear this, you know, being said quite a few times today. This, this program's totally voluntary. It is temporary, and it's compensated. So, you know, we are, you know, being paid for this from external agency. I'll describe what that is in a minute. So there's no impact to CVWD's canal budget. So, you know, I want to get that out on the table and repeat it a few times as we go through today's presentation. So there's been a lot of talks about, you know, the conditions on the Colorado River. And I don't have to tell you, you all, you know, who are in the business, you know, what dire straits that we're in, you know, today. Not just on the Colorado River, but, you know, certainly in the state of California, where we're getting 5% allocation second year in a row. So, you know, it's been kind of a difficult time if you're in the water sector. But today, I like to focus a little bit on the Colorado River conditions. And I know there's been a lot of buzz in the news, but I just kind of like to set the, you know, the record straight on what we're looking at here, where we've been and where we're going. And then one natural question is, okay, you know, we've been talking about, you know, conservation programs here and there. And I would say, you know, having visited some other districts in the last couple of weeks, I've come to certainly appreciate, I think, the efforts that, you know, the growers take care of the land and the irrigation practices in the valley. But I think what we're asking for is, you know, to step up, you know, maybe that extra step to help conserve more water, you know, and actually be able to put it back into Lake Mead. And I'll tell you why, you know, why the urgency is now. I'll describe a little bit about the program elements. And this, these are still a work in progress and subject to the board approval. But I'd like to just float some ideas out there, so, you know, you have something to think about. And, you know, kind of walk you through what the application process looks like. And then, you know, walk you through some conservation and payment examples. And then kind of follow it up with questions and answers. Because this is a workshop. And so, you know, it's only successful if we get some input. So on the background, I think some of this is pre, you know, I think everybody in here knows, but I think it's worth repeating. You know, the river system, basically, you know, you've got Lake Powell, Lake Mead as the two primary reservoirs. About 16 million acre feet of storage serves 40 million people. And really, I think, you know, everybody knows that it's been a state of drought since the early 2000s. So we're, you know, headed into like almost 23rd year. Delivery obligations on the river, 16.5 million acre feet. So it's seven and a half to Upper Basin, seven and a half to Lower Basin, and then one and a half million acre feet to Mexico. So it's quite a bit. So, you know, when I was kind of putting this presentation together and see where we came from, in 2000, when we started the drought, the reservoirs were 95% full, so it's 57 million acre feet. Today, well, actually, not today, last week, it's recorded at 34%. So it's really at the lowest level, you know, since the filling of the reservoirs. And it's really down to like 20 million acre feet. So when you look at that number, it's a little scary, right? Because, you know, if we have 16.5 million acre feet of obligations, where's all this water going to be, you know, coming from? And obviously, I mean, I'm exaggerating a little bit because, you know, there's some runoff and so on. But it's just sort of been darn dry, you know, the last, you know, 23 years. So I think, you know, management on the Colorado River is not a new thing. I think, you know, all of you in the Coachella Valley, you know, knows the importance of the QSA, you know, to, you know, this district. So this happened back in 2003, where we're quantified, you know, California was put, and we remained on our water diet of 4.4 million acre feet, of which, you know, CVWD gets 330,000 acre feet, you know, for the benefit of the community. And you, you kind of move on, 2007, there was the Interment Guidelines, which is set to expire in, at the end of 2025. And, you know, so since that time, you know, there's been a lot of talks about, okay, what happens, you know, when the river, you know, does start going dry a little bit? And so in 2019, we signed, we were party to the drought contingency plan, which, for the first time, actually placed California in a position of making voluntary contributions when the lake elevation levels in Lake Mead dropped below 1045. And I'm, you know, I'm going to throw out some numbers here today, but, you know, but I won't be testing anybody on it. I think the number that you need to know is, you know, I think the, for this program, is $200 an acre foot that you conserve. Kind of moving on to 2021, at the end of 2021, there was some realization that the steps for the drought contingency plan may not be enough. So, you know, at the Colorado River Water Users Association meeting in Vegas in December, the states and the FES came together and said, we're going to do this 500-plus plan, which I think some of you may have heard of in the news. So the idea is that in 2022 and 2023, parties in the Lower Basin will be asked or being requested to conserve water. And they will be compensated. There's $200 million total, you know, for that program. Again, that's, that's why we're talking today. Because this money is only available, at least officially, until the end of 2023. And I think the clock already started ticking on this. So anyways, there's $200 million, and that's the bucket that we're going to be drawing from to kind of minister this program. Okay, so the Colorado River Water usage, you know, in the Coachella Valley, in my mind, there's at least, you know, three primary usages. There's replenishment, there's, you know, for the golf courses, and lastly, for the agricultural community. So, you know, when we're kind of thinking about, you know, contributing and leaving water on the river, you know, where can we do that from? And, you know, the least impactful way, I think, you know, to our community. On the replenishment, I think, you know, you know, if you don't know it, I think our drinking water, you know, for this valley actually comes from groundwater. And then the groundwater also supplies, you know, for other uses too, you know, for people who are not necessarily on canal, on canal water. And, you know, we're trying to shift, you know, to as much canal usage as we can, and then also non-potable. So, yeah, I mean, while we can cut back on replenishment, we really prefer not to, because there are some regulations that we have to comply by, you know, like the sustainability, groundwater sustainability rule, SIGMA, for short. And basically, you know, if you're cutting off replenishment, you're just shifting the problem, you know, into the future, right? Because you're not putting water back in, you know, that you're using for consumptive purposes. On the golf courses, I think we're doing some outreach to them and say, hey, you know, are there some opportunities that you guys can help us out with? Maybe like, you know, removing of some non-playable turf, for example, that won't, you know, damage or harm the experience, but still, you know, be able to kind of help us out. And the last part is on agricultural side, and that's why we're talking today, is, you know, are there opportunities that we can, you know, look at for the next two years? And I kind of, you know, stayed away from the fowling word on purpose. I know it's got some emotional connotations, I think, for some people. And if there's other ways that we can, you know, help conserve water in these next two years, because we have to demonstrate that we're leaving water in, you know, Lake Mead in '22 and '23. And that's not just our requirement, but for the funding agencies. They want to see a system benefit, you know, on this. So some of the things that we're kind of thinking about, and, you know, this is where we're trying to get, you know, maybe some input from you all in the audience, and also virtually, is, okay, are there changes in crops that you guys are, you know, anticipating, you know, maybe next couple of three years that would, you know, perhaps use less water? That we can accelerate that, you know, through this, you know, financial incentive? Is there a temporary stoppage of use that you can do? And, you know, some of the things that I kind of gathered through our visits, you know, with other districts, is that, you know, sometimes, you know, the farming community takes a plot of land out for soil management. I mean, you don't want to be growing the same thing, you know, year in and year out. I mean, it's really terrible for the nutrients. And then also, you know, you can't really do work on your land, I mean, when it's in production, right? So, you know, you may take it out, and it may be a good time to do some, you know, improvements on irrigation system and whatnot. And then, you know, could there be some opportunities for seasonal fowling? I mean, because I know our lands are really productive. I mean, we get, you know, 360 days of sunshine a year and plenty of water. So, you know, is there a way that, you know, with these seasonal crops, you know, there might be opportunity to kind of stop the, you know, growth of that? So, you know, those are some things that we kind of thought about. But, you know, definitely like to hear your thoughts are, you know, as we kind of move on. Okay, so just real briefly, these next three slides will talk about the conditions on the river. And, you know, hopefully, you know, this, this is the truth according to what I know as we stand today. So these two graphs kind of show, you know, parallel graphs of Lake Powell and Lake Mead elevations, you know, since they started filling, you know, back in the early 60s. And, you know, what you'll notice is that, you know, towards the very right-hand side is the conditions in 2022. And, you know, I think the graphic may be a little hard for you, you know, for some to see. But needless to say, those, those really, those red lines, the horizontal red lines on both Lake Powell and Mead, define some pretty critical levels that we're, not just us, but I think, you know, the whole basin are concerned with. And you can see how close we are, you know, to those levels. So for Lake Powell, it's really about power production. And then for Lake Mead, it's about shortages. Because you've got 1075, 1050, and 1025 as being the trigger points for when shortages are enacted. And so for the first time ever, you know, January 1st of this year, there were shortages to Arizona and Nevada. California hasn't been affected yet. And we're trying to keep it, you know, that way. So this is what it looked like before, you know, up to now. So again, to kind of highlight the point, okay, in 2000, when we first started, you know, the elevation levels were, you know, this, 57 milli acre feet between the two reservoirs. In 2022, it's, you know, declined down to 20.4 million acre feet. So, you know, this, this decline is real. And one of the interesting things, when I was kind of looking at how much it's dropped, you know, both of these lakes have dropped almost 160 feet. I mean, that's pretty sobering, you know, when you kind of think about. And even if we have, you know, one or good two, one or more wet winters, it's going to take a bit, you know, for this situation to kind of reverse itself. So that's where we came from, and that's where we are today. What does it look like going in the future? So I think, you know, some of you may be familiar with reclamation. Bureau of Reclamation is the water master, you know, certainly for the lower basin. And what they do is they take, you know, the data and really smart people in their offices, you know, crank this through their river modeling for the next 24 months to see what, you know, the projections look like. And so, you know, so this gives them an ability to look and say, okay, you know, is it going to be bad? If it's going to be bad, then we need to start consulting with the states and, you know, come up with some actions. Okay, so everything to the right of February 2022, the dashed line, those are projected elevation levels. And again, you know, you don't have to, you know, really understand what these numbers are. But there, I show two red lines kind of going across. One at 1045 was dashed, and one solid red line, which is 1025, which is on the bottom there. Okay, so the dashed red line at 1045 is the trigger level that we negotiated for California to start making contributions when that level, you know, is, gets below that level. The other, you know, couple of lines I want to draw your attention to is these vertical lines. Okay, so again, you know, you'll see some of these lines kind of dipping below certain critical points throughout the year. But really, what reclamation makes the determination on when these shortages occur is on January 1st of each year. So January 1st of 2022 has already passed, obviously. So we're looking forward to '23 and '24 and see what happens. So this blue line, the blue dotted line, is what I'll call the most optimistic view. And that, and, you know, just my own terms, I think, you know, for the modelers, you know, in the audience, you know, you're going to cringe, because I think reclamation calls these like maximum probable, which to me really doesn't mean a whole lot. What it really means is that this blue line will only occur 10% of the time. So it's not great odds. So they do a whole series of different probabilities. So the green probability is 50% of the time. So it means, you know, half the time it will be above, and half the time it will be below that. And then the red line is 90%. So basically, you've only got a 90% chance of getting below that, 90% chance that we will, I'm sorry, 10% chance that that won't happen, 90% chance that we will. So if I take a look at the, the red line and the green line, again, in 2023, it doesn't look like California's going to be impacted, because, you know, January 1st of that year, 2023, we're still going to be above 1045, right? That dashed red line going across horizontal. But if you look at 2024, okay, unless, you know, you're talking about the 10% line, you know, at the 50 percentile, I mean, you know, it's a pretty good chance that we're going to have to start making some contributions. So I think that's one of the reasons why, you know, there's some criticality to this, and because there will be some impacts to California, I think in, you know, the next 18 months, if this goes, goes through. So again, 2024, you know, it looks like it may be, you know, the, the time when we're starting, and this is not voluntary, this is, we have to do it. And we're not going to be compensated for that. So one of the things that reclamation has started doing, and we've been active in those negotiations, is in May, so this month, they said, okay, you know, these levels look like they're not reversing themselves, you know, because we always kind of rely on snowpack to kind of bail us out. Well, guess what? The snowpack didn't really come. What load there is gets soaked into the, you know, the soil. So there is no runoff to speak of, very little. So they've taken some pretty drastic actions. So one of the actions that they've taken, taken was they withheld, they were supposed to release 7.48 million acre feet down to the Lower Basin. So they've withheld almost half a million acre feet of that to be held in Powell. Okay, because again, once they release it, it comes down here, you know, they don't have that to play with, right, as a tool? So they withheld that to be repaid back at a future time. But, you know, the other reservoir that, you know, that we talked about is Lake Powell. So Lake Powell, again, you know, same, same sort of, you know, graphics. But I'll just spend a minute on elevation 3490, which is that solid red line on the bottom here. And hopefully, you know, everybody can see it. But bottom line is, once Lake Powell gets to 3490 and drops below, you can't run the water through the turbines. So there is no power production. And this has more than just impacts to California. This is all of the Western power grid. So it's, it's a huge concern, I think, you know, not just for the FES, but I think, you know, for all the, you know, all the users of the Colorado River and the system. So why we are alarmed about 3490 was because we set 34, I mean, sorry, 3525 as the warning level, which gives us enough time to react. And we crossed 3525 and went below it earlier this year, back in March. And this made national headlines. So these, these are things that, you know, we're all looking at, trying to figure out what to do. So, so they're backing up half a million acre feet of Lower Basin water into the Upper Basin. Okay, so again, kind of looking at the same graphics. Okay, so in 2024, there's a pretty good, you know, there may be a chance that we may be reaching that power pool, you know, if you look at that dashed red line. So these are the reasons why there's a criticality, accelerated criticality on that. And what the Upper Basin has done is actually released about half a million acre feet from their Upper Basin reservoirs, which, you know, they didn't want to do. But basically, we said, okay, if we're doing something as the Lower Basin, you guys have to do something as the Upper Basin. It's only fair. So, you know, together, it's about a million acre feet that they're putting in and withholding at Lake Powell. So these are the things, so with that, I think, you know, everybody in the room has kind of caught up to speed on the state of play in, on the Colorado River. So kind of pivoting a little bit, okay, more specifically to this district, we've had a little bit of history with agricultural conservation. And, you know, I'm talking about specific actions, you know, generally, not the actions that, you know, each one of your individual agencies have done to, you know, go from flood to drip, for instance. Because I know, you know, that's, you know, definitely been something that, you know, has taken place. So we've had some modest, you know, trials with conservation efforts. You know, the last one was actually back in 2015. And some of you may or may not remember this. This was a flood-to-drip program that was administered by reclamation. And I think we got about a, about a million dollars. But I would say, you know, it was less than an astounding success. I mean, we got like 163 acre feet of, you know, water savings. So the appetite, I guess, just wasn't there. So we kind of pivot to today, where, you know, on the conserve CRW program. And again, I just want to say that, you know, this is still, the program is still very much under development. I mean, I think we got some of the, the framework around it, which I'll discuss here in a minute. But again, you know, we emphasize this is totally voluntary, temporary, and compensated. We have to demonstrate some water savings in these next two years. For participants, we will be doing a temporary waiver of the irrigation water availability, availability assessment, because we realize you're not using the water, you know, during that time. So it's not, you know, not, not fair to ask you to pay for that. In return, we'll, we'll pay $200 an acre foot net, you know, to you all. So let's go through some of the program elements and see what that looks like. So from a program administration standpoint, okay, so we're really talking about three parties. We're talking about the participants, we're talking about CVWD, and we're talking about Metropolitan. So I very purposely have separated Metropolitan from the participants, because I think in some other areas, the state Metropolitan ministers, you know, some fowling programs. After discussions with our board, we decided that's probably not the best idea. We want to be the face of this program, you know, for the community, and be your customer service agents. So let's kind of talk about what this looks like. So we will be dealing directly with the participants. And we'll be administering the program, we'll be reviewing the applications, and then the agreements, we'll be conducting the verification, and then we'll be, we'll actually be reimbursing you all. So, you know, the check that we'll be cutting will be on CVWD Litterhead. And then we'll take the verification materials from, you know, the participants. And then, you know, we'll be interacting with Metropolitan for reimbursement on that. Because we don't want you to have to go through the, you know, the trouble of having to deal with an external agency. I think we prefer to do that. And then, you know, any other kind of coordination, we'll be conducting with Met on that. So anyways, you know, when you see it, you know, you'll be talking to us and not to some third party. Okay, so the program elements, and again, this is definitely subject to board approval. I haven't really had time to, you know, walk through some of these elements. But I do know that, you know, if I were staying in your shoes, I wouldn't want some, as much specific details as I can for consideration. So these are some of the things that we're, you know, talking about. So we think, you know, it's, you know, for us, it makes some sense to have some minimum savings, you know, before we can participate. Because again, this program is going to take a bit of effort and a bit of staff time, you know, to do. And we're happy to do it. But, you know, if you come in with like 10 acre feet of savings, you know, we still have to go through the same amount of paperwork as if, you know, you did like 1,000 acre feet of savings. So we try to put, you know, try to be reasonable and say, hey, you know, maybe like 100 acre feet, you know, a year is reasonable. But that's under discussion right now. But, you know, put a number out there, you know, just see how you all feel about it. And we realize that there's exceptions. You know, once you set a rule, there's always exceptions, right? So, you know, we're also saying, what about, what about people who do seasonal fowling? Yeah, I mean, I think seasonal fowling, you know, certainly can be encouraged. And I've got an example, you know, a little later, that kind of talks about what that looks like. So, you know, if you're in, under seasonal fowling mode, maybe the 100 acre feet, you know, a year doesn't apply to you. And we'll take whatever we can get. I think another component of this, you know, you've got to be able to demonstrate some water use on this particular, you know, plot of land that you're talking about fowling. I mean, you know, I don't think the intent here is like, well, I've never used this plot of land for the last 10 years, and, you know, I get credit for it because, you know, I'm paying to IWAA. You know, there's no water use. And again, for the funders, they want to see some real water being put back or left in the system. And again, this is a pilot program. So I think our success or failure is, you know, going to be dependent on how well we execute on this. So, you know, the savings can be, will be calculated against the average of the years with consumption. And I'll walk through a very specific example here, you know, momentarily, about what that looks like. So, you know, there's no, you know, unclarity in the room. 200 acre feet net provided participants. And we're thinking about paying this through two installments, maybe like at the midterm and then at the end of the program. You know, we, we think that's kind of a reasonable, you know, payout. One big and important thing that I didn't talk about, I think I alluded to earlier, there will be no groundwater substitution, you know, allowed. And I know that, you know, most growers here are very good about having wells as backup supplies. But again, you know, if you go, switch over to groundwater, that's just creating a problem for us to have to put that water back in future years. So we talked about the IWA being waived. And, okay, so what are some of the landowner leasee responsibilities? And, you know, we, we do consider leasees to be a viable part of this program. So I think, you know, a couple of things here. Dust and weed control are important. I mean, and, you know, some of this is Metropolitan's requirements, because, you know, they don't want, you know, these lands to kind of look disheveled and, you know, not kept up. And then, you know, the dust abatement is for the air quality management districts' issues and concerns. And then, you know, we're asking the participants to pay for all, you know, applicable charges like you normally would. Because, you know, we don't, we don't want to come back after this program and find out, okay, well, you know what, you know, they, you know, y'all didn't pay your normal charges, and then, you know, we're, CVWD's, you know, left holding the bag. So, you know, just want to make sure that was, you know, was, was put out there early. Okay, so once you kind of walk through that and you say, okay, well, you know, this program, it may, may make some sense for us, what's the next steps? So going from left to right, so the first, first step is really the survey and application. And this is, you know, largely the participant's responsibility. And some of you have already turned in your survey, which, you know, greatly appreciated on that. If you haven't done so and you're interested, I think there's some paper forms in the back. So we're having, so complete the survey by, after Memorial Day, I think, you know, June 2nd is reasonable. And the reason why the survey is important, again, we really didn't know what the turnout was going to be and the level of interest. Again, you know, we're only getting, and I think I showed an example of, you know, the last conservation program, we only got 163 acre feet of savings. If it's going to be a small amount, I'm not sure whether the board is going to say, you know, staff, you know, we authorize staff to spend your time on this. So I think we're trying to, you know, gauge, okay, you know, is it going to be a reasonable number that, you know, that the board is willing to commit, you know, some, some level of effort on this? So even though, you know, you say, well, I'm, I'm filling out application, why do I have to fill a survey? I think the survey is the first step, you know, for us to gauge the interest. And then depending on, you know, the outcome of the survey, we're proposing to go to our board for approval of this program, you know, to, for, on June 27th. Okay, so the last board meeting of this fiscal year. And after that, we can release the application, you know, online. You all fill it out, we take a look at it, determine eligibility, and I think it's a pretty simple process. And if you guys are eligible, then, you know, we go through and, you know, sign the agreements and, and all that, all the paperwork, and, you know, we get started. Okay, so once we get started, what does that look like? So, you know, I'm in the middle column here on the verification process. So again, realizing the fact that, you know, it, this is not a one-size-fits-all. But, you know, if we, one of the elements that I've seen in our visits to other districts, you know, with these kind of programs, is, you know, once they enroll in the program, let's say it's a fowling program, there's a lockout on the gate, so there's no water use. So if, you know, if it's a fowling program for here, then, yeah, I think we probably have to follow the same thing, because I, and, you know, Metropolitan's probably going to say, well, we use these, you know, the same sort of rules on the other, you know, in the other programs. So, you know, we think it's a reasonable thing to ask. We might be conducting periodic field verification, you know, just to make sure like nothing's growing, you know, on the fields. And we say that, and for the most part, I mean, we can do this, you know, without the participants or the landowners being there. You know, I mean, we just do a quick drive-by and it's pretty, you know, for dust control, for, you know, weed, weed abatement, and just make sure nothing's growing. But I would say that during the time at the midterm verification process, it might be a good idea for be a good idea for the participant to be out there. And the reason why is because, you know, we will be coming with what we think the verified savings are. Because we can tell, you know, through the bills, right? I mean, y'all get, you know, regular bills, and we'll say, okay, you know, for the last six months, you know, this is what the bills show. And then, you know, gauging against what we projected before, against your, you know, typical monthly use, you know, this is what, you know, we're, we're going to reimburse you. So, again, we need some paperwork and documentation that, you know, you agreed with it. And then once, you know, it's an agreement, we were in receipt of this signed form, then we'll, you know, bring it back, get it, get a process, and get you all paid out within like a 30 day period, for example. And then we'll be obtaining the program progress by, again, you know, kind of looking at the fields, we'll be looking at the bills. And then we'll also, for additional step, you know, the groundwater use. And realizing that not everybody here, you know, has a groundwater bill, if you're a minimum pumper, I mean, you're not even, you know, really on radar. But, you know, to the degree that we can, we need to provide the steps of verification, I think, you know, for our funding partners. And then the very last column, which is probably the most important part, the reimbursements, you know, what does that look like? I already talked about a little bit, but, you know, you're, you are going to get reimbursed twice during this, you know, this participation period. And then we'll calculate the reimbursement and, you know, and give it to you, and you guys say yes or no, and, you know, we'll go from there. Okay. So I know you all have a lot of questions, probably, okay, you know, and so on. So I think I actually, you know, went through and think, okay, what kind of makes sense in terms of giving you some examples for, for you, you know, to take back and think about as you're doing and doing your own calculations. So let's just say that, I have two examples for conservation, two examples, I think, for payment. So the first example is, let's say that you got a 12, you know, you want to enroll, you know, beginning in 2023, and then it terminates in December. So you've got 12 months, and you've got 40 acres, okay, of land. So I know, very simple example, but the question is, as you're doing your calculation, okay, what's the potential reimbursement, okay, if you're taking all of this land out for this one year period? So we said that we're going to use three out of five years, right, of consumption history. And so for this example, you know, the graph, you know, just kind of shows the, the consumption by years, by each individual month, right? So, you know, each one of these different colors represents 2017, 2020, and 2021. You'll notice that, you know, for this example, there was no consumption at all for 2018 and 2019, I mean, for whatever reason. So this still fits, you know, fits, I think, the criteria that we're looking for. So, you know, for this, if you just kind of take a look at January, for instance, okay, you've got, you know, usage ranging from 11 acre feet for that month, you know, clear up to 15 acre feet. So what we're going to do is, we're going to take an average of those three and come out with 13 acre feet as the baseline for that month. And then you can, you know, kind of follow it, you know, through the, the rest of the, you know, the months. And then what we do is, we add up all the bold, the ones in bold, you know, the 13, the 20, et cetera. And we get about 300 acre feet, I think, you know, the precise number, I know Director Nelson is like out there with his calculator already, you know, 300. So it's 301 to be precise, but I just assess, you know, 300. So 300 acre feet at $200 acre foot, you would net $60,000. Okay, so any questions on that? Okay, pretty straightforward. Okay, the next question, I'm sorry, the next example is a little bit of a spin on the original one. So we're still using the same, you know, land, 40 acres. But now, instead of taking it out for the entire year, you're saying, okay, I, I only want to do seasonal fallowing. I've got something that's growing, that's taken up a lot of water, you know, between May to August, for example. And I only want to take out half the land, right, during this time. Because, so, so what, what does that look like? Okay, so, you know, the averages, I think we talked about how you get. So from, from May to August, we would add up the 39, 40, 38, and 38, right? And we get a total of like about 155. So because that's spread out over 40 acres, and, you know, I, I don't know, you know, if you guys are like applying this uniformly or not. Again, that's kind of getting a level of detail that I'm sure, you know, that I'm thinking is, you know, just beyond the scope of this program. But let's just say it's applied uniformly. Okay, you want to take out half that land during these four months, then I would take that 155 acre feet, divide by half, get, you know, a little bit less than 78 acre feet. So I would take 78 or 77 and a half by 200, and I would get 15,500, you know, for those, these four months over that 20 acres. And this will be paid in, you know, two installments, again, probably, you know, at the midterm in June, and then at the end of August, you know, in this example. So I'll just take a pause. Any questions about how this one looks? Good?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So if you're taking it out for half the year, or you just be basing it on what the monthly consumption was, not the year total, and then six months back, back out as a monthly, so you have to be able to verify that you're not using it because you did use it previously?
Yes, sir. I think that's exactly right. And, you know, I think this agency is kind of unique in fact that, I mean, you know, I think all our customers are metered. So we do, and we do have the ability to, you know, to check it by month. I think for some others, you know, they may have to kind of, you know, do like what you're talking about, you know, kind of back things out and so on. I mean, we actually have measurements. You know, whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, I'll let you decide what that is. But, you know, that's just the reality. It just makes, you know, our verification a little easier.
Hey, Robert, just for the benefit of those on Zoom, I don't believe they can hear members in the audience, so if maybe you can repeat the question?
Of course, yeah. Sorry about that. So I think the question was, for those four months that, you know, are being talked, being discussed in this example for fallowing, will we be using the monthly averages, or will we be looking at, you know, the annual and then, you know, doing some, you know, some math manipulation on the end? And, and I, my answer was, no, because we have the ability to look at monthly bills, we will be looking at the actual usages for those months, and then kind of gauging, you know, what the actual, with the historical, and then comparing it to the actual, and then paying, you know, those, I guess, that for those, those specific months. Okay. Great. Thanks for your question.
Do we want to open it up, does anyone, in case anybody has any question?
If you'd like, yeah.
Just, I just want to make a note, if there's anybody on Zoom that has a question as Robert is making the presentation, please use the raise hand feature, or you can use the chat box and enter the question there, and I will go ahead and ask that on your behalf. Thank you.
I have one more question on previous topic, and if you're, I want to get ahead of what may forget. So you talk about locking out meters when you're fallowing, from previous experience in current. We, we were careful about what we learned in the first beginning of fallowing, that we would continue to, we order what we call the, a refreshment water. So if your canals, your ditch, your ditches, your reservoirs don't, you know, crack and dry out. So if I've got reservoirs that are going to be left dry for 12 months, is there a way for me to order so many inches just to fill it back up and have that deducted off?
Almost feels like you read my, my next slide here. No, that, that's a perfect question. So, so the question for people on the, on, who's participating virtually, you know, the question is, okay, so if you have a reservoir that, you know, needs to be wetted in order to keep it from going, you know, being cracking, you know, for these 12 months, is there an ability for you to do that? And yes, I mean, I would say absolutely. And if I could just maybe go to the example and kind of show you what, what we're thinking of. So, you know, this, I mean, it's, it's a great question. Okay, so any questions on Zoom before we go on? No, good?
Nope, you're good.
Okay. So the question here is payment example number one. So you're enrolled in the program, you know, it's a 12 month program, you know, the same, same example, you know, 40 acres, okay, and, you know, and you're estimating, we've got 301 acre feet of savings, because you're fallowing, you know, the entire time. Okay, and you've got these actual uses shown below. Okay, what, what is your reimbursement? Okay, so, you know, rather than like, you know, three, three years worth of data, I just, you know, simply put, you know, in the blue lines, these are the averages, right? So I think, you know, everybody's kind of familiar with that by now. And the actual use, you know, for 2023, you know, you've got a little bit of use in April, and you've got a little bit of use in May, you know, just one acre feet. Okay, so we would take those one acre feet, you know, because we can actually meter it, and we would take that off of, you know, what your reimbursement is. You know, so obviously, you know, for two acre feet, you would, you know, not get paid $400. So, you know, but I think the more important point on this one, you can order the water, and obviously, you know, we have to figure out about locking it out, and, you know, how to, how to, you know, kind of work around that issue. But, A, I think there's, there is an ability for you to use, you know, some water for not growing crops, but, you know, maybe for dust control or whatever. And then, you know, in your case, which I didn't think about, you know, the reservoir and concrete cracking, you know, that, you know, if that's a real thing, then yeah, I mean, absolutely. So, so that's one. There are some, you know, some usages that you can, you know, apply this for. But I think secondly is, you know, one of the questions that I would have, if I were you, okay, in the agreement, you asked me to sign up for a certain block of water, right? In this case, it'd be like 301. Are there any penalties if I don't hit that? So, you know, this case obviously is not dramatic. I mean, it's only two acre feet, but, you know, let's say it's, you know, 20 acre feet. Same principle still apply here. If you use 20 acre feet, it's not for growing crops, absolutely. I mean, I think, you know, we'll just take it off, but, you know, the IWA does kind of kick in, right? Because, you know, when you're actually using the water. So, again, I think, you know, this hopefully highlights and gets to the question that you were asking previously. Okay, I'm going to move on to the next example, which is, okay, so you're changing crops now. You're not fallowing. You're actually, you know, going from a more water intensive crop, you know, to something a little less thirsty. So, again, you know, in this case, we can't lock you out because you're still using water. Okay, so, you know, you think that through the water savings, that you could, you know, maybe get 200 acre feet of savings, you know, this is your calculations, and actual use is shown, shown here. Okay, what's the reimbursement? Again, you know, here, you know, the savings in the first half of the year, and I think, you know, just to, so that we're all on the same page, you know, the savings is, you know, the blue minus the, you know, the gold bars, right? So that's the differences. So it's 152 acre feet in the first six, six months of the year, what was estimated from previous consumption, and then what your actual consumption is, is 56 acre feet. Okay, so you saved 96 acre feet in that year, I'm sorry, in those six, for six months. So you get reimbursed $19,200, okay, for the, for that first six months. The second six months, you know, you can, you know, read as well as I can, you, you know, you get 18,800. So your total is about, you know, $38,000 in savings. So you didn't quite hit that 200 acre feet target, but there's no penalties for that. Because again, you know, we just kind of realized, you know, this is a ballpark figure, and, you know, there's, you know, crop growth, so you're going to need, you know, some water for this. And, you know, you told us ahead of time, so we're not locking out. So when we go out to field, you know, when we see crops, you know, we're not saying, hey, you know, you kind of weren't doing what you're supposed to be doing. So again, relatively simple example, no penalties, you know, if you didn't meet the target. And, you know, so this one, you know, there is water use. I'll just take a pause here and see if there's any kind of questions from this, you know, either from the audience. Yes, sir?
Robert, if I assume our purchases are at the current rates?
The current water purchases?
Yes. I'm anxious for giving up, we're giving up the opportunity to get $200, $200 an acre foot for water, but if we buy eight acre feet, we're going to pay at the current rates?
Yeah, whatever, you know, the, yeah, 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 exactly. Yeah, yeah. So, sorry, I, okay.
I don't think I've covered this enough. Well, we're vegetable growers, I'm from belt parts, all this direction belt parts.
Yes.
Our, our water usage is wild because of the different crops and the different conditions. It's not like we're grapes or citrus or one of the guys.
Hmm.
So if we sign up for the program, will the district tell us what our average acre feet is for that parcel or for that meter? Or are we going to calculate that and tell you, give you our estimate?
I would say that we could, I mean, we will have the records, right, you know, for this plot of land. So, I mean, we can certainly do our own, you know, our own calculation. But I would say that, you know, it probably doesn't hurt, you know, to do your own calculation, and we can, you know, figure out what's going on. Because, again, I think, you know, the more, you know, eyes we have on this, I think the better. I mean, even though it may be, you know, take an extra step. But, you know, so all this is, you know, I, I don't want to get us in a position of saying, well, you know, CVWD didn't reimburse us, you know, because they didn't understand our practices. I think, you know, we're, you know, we realize, you know, this is something that you all are doing voluntarily. So, you know, we want to be as, as fair as we can.
I guess I just want to make sure the historical baseline is agreed on that it's going yet.
Absolutely.
And, and I'm just, again, for our situation, it's, it'd be pretty hard to go through and figure out where it came from five years ago. And we'd have to distribute all our bills and calculate. And I didn't know if you have the ability to do that, if we said, hey, we want to take this 40 acres and take it out.
We, we do, you know, we, we can look at, you know, by the APN, we actually have our, one, well, one of his many duties, the billing customer service director here. So...
Yeah, we will, we can work on that and make sure that we're all on the same page. And if you're thinking about where this came, we could run them numbers. Okay, just one more question.
Please.
The complication is that we've got meters that are tied to different parcels, and we skip a meter because of how our system's set up. Are you, are you geared up to be able to calculate that sort of difference? So we may take 40 acres and connect it to another 200 acres. Our usage is still going to be pretty high, it's going to be lower than it was, so we're just going to do the estimate and look at the differences over that period.
Yeah, I think you brought up a great, great example. And I was trying to, you know, think about how to kind of verbalize this. But, so I'm, I'm happy that you kind of brought it up. So, you know, for those on the phone, and, you know, just make sure I get the question correctly. So you've got more than just, you know, one 40 acre, acre plot, you've got multiple. You've got a meter that's feeding, you know, different, you know, plots and so on. So I, I think you hit it exactly right. So we're going to be taking a look at the, you know, I mean, how much land you actually own. And hopefully, you know, at the end of that, you know, you will, you know, your net use goes down, right? I mean, it doesn't do us any good if you take, you know, this plot out, out of production, and then, you know, okay, I'm just going to grow over here. I mean, the whole purpose really is to, you know, demonstrate some overall usage. So I don't know if I have a specific answer for how we will, will take a look at that. We're still kind of trying to work out the details on that. But it is something that we're, you know, very cognizant about. Because how do we demonstrate to our partners, right, that, you know, there is an overall, you know, decreased usage? So I'm glad that we're thinking along the same lines. Thank you.
Robert, there's a question on Zoom from Jesus. He's asking, what is the criteria for fallowed land? What if we fallowed in 2021 and not this current year?
Okay, so if they, they're not fallowing this year, there's going to be water usage, right? The last five years, that's right. I mean, and we were, realized, I mean, it's not just a one year, you know, situation, because, you know, anything could happen, you know, within the space of one year. So, yeah, I mean, we'll take, we'll, we'll review that. And if you meet that criteria, you know, you're, I mean, we'll, you know, definitely see if you're eligible for the program. Yes, sir?
So you had to change a crop, for example, too.
Right.
What if, what if it's changed methodology of the way you apply your, your micro or whatever, or some other sort of criteria that you're doing that can, that can, you know, physically verify, you got to verify that you're saying?
Yes.
That you could do that without applying.
Yeah, that's a great question. So for those on the phone, the question is, so rather, in this example, I kind of talked about swishing the crops, which, you know, reduce your water use. What if you made an investment, say like last year, and, you know, you're going to see some savings, you know, in, in more efficient irrigation practices, you know, kind of rolling forward? I would say yes. I mean, that, because what we're looking at is demonstrated water savings against the, you know, previous, you know, five years.
So is there going to be a certain, like a toolbox, if you will, of applications of the ways to verify that we all could use or all accept?
Right, right. I didn't throw, you know, changing irrigation practices in here is because, for the simple reason that, you know, for you to make the change, you know, starting now, it's going to be, you know, takes a few years, right, to show, to demonstrate water savings. And I just didn't know whether we can actually show to demonstrate water savings. You know, if you say, okay, well, I'm interested, but I'm not going to get, get around to kind of changing out, you know, the irrigation infrastructure, you know, until like 2023, well, you know, I'm not sure whether you can do that in time and still show water savings. But if you have something that's already in that could potentially show some water savings, I think it's something that is worth considering. Again, you know, we have to kind of vet this through our, you know, our funding partners to say, okay, you know, does, you know, kind of meet the criteria. But it's definitely something worth thinking about. Yes, sir?
Robert, hey, so in a prior slide, you showed a farm that had water use three of the last five years. So you took the three years that had water use and averaged those.
Right.
What if there's water use all?
Right. Right, right. I think that's a great point, President Powell. We haven't really talked about that very much. I mean, I think we can discuss that a little bit more internally to see if that makes sense. And again, I think this is something that we're gonna have to run also through metropolitans, because they're paying for this. But I can see some justification for both. Right, right. I think we're on fairly solid footing, taking out the zeros. I mean, I know I didn't run these slides before, in front of the directors before. Well, I think you kind of put me in that box over there. So I think it's just, you know, the reason I can't commit to it yet, I'm kind of going through the rationale in my mind of how, so, no, totally great point. We will, yeah. Yes, sir? Okay. Right, okay. So for those on the phone, I think President Powell was asking about, are we, if you have water use through all the five years, are we gonna use all the numbers? Or are we gonna use the three highest? Or, I think there was a comment from a gentleman in the audience saying, okay, another methodology could be thrown out to the low and high, and then just taking the three middle ones. So I think, you know, I think for sure, based on this methodology that we talked about, throwing out the zeros, I think there's justification for those three years. So the question is, three highest years or three low and high being thrown out? Okay. Great questions, I appreciate the dialogue. Okay, so moving on to program schedule. And this is obviously subject to the change as well. So we're, in May, we did a lot of outreach and discussions with the board initially in April. So the idea is that, again, rolling forward, June 2nd will be the deadline for finishing the survey. We plan going to our board at the end of June to get this approved, and the application will be opened up. So July to September, we'll hopefully, if we roll this forward, we'll be working with applicants to get them enrolled and getting things ready. We initially had a date of October 1st to kind of start the program. But again, I think in talking to our funding partner, if we can get something going in before then, I mean, I think October 1st is not the hard and fast deadline for the starting date. If you want to start like in September, I mean, we certainly can do that, too. We try to be fairly flexible. So we already talked about next steps. Please complete the survey. And the application forms should be available after June 28th at the website. And then we'll notify your acceptance in this program after we review the survey, application, and consent form. I know there's some of these, I guess, less than normal situations. And we'll be thinking about that. And if you guys don't mind, maybe we can reach out to you and say, okay, what's a good way of kind of getting this resolved in the next month or so? Because I think we need to figure that out, too. So with that... Right. So for those who are attending virtually, how firm are we on the end date? I think that was the question. And I think we're, we will try to be as flexible as we can. The reason why I put December 31st of 2025 is because that's when the official funding ends. But, and I haven't gotten any word that it will be extended officially. But unofficially, I hear, and again, I think it shouldn't be a surprise, based on the graphics I showed, that the system's not going to recover anytime soon. And once we get this pilot program going, I'd imagine there probably will be an appetite for it. And so part of that conversation is the funding's still gonna be there. So I think we're probably okay into the first half of like 2024. I don't want to say that officially, because I haven't gotten any notification. And I'm trying to work with our attorney on how to kind of craft that flexibility into the agreements. But I think your question about, can we finish the, you know, the end date or the start date in January? Yeah, I think we can definitely work with you on that. Okay. Okay, any other questions? Yes, sir? Please. No, that's great. Oh, boy. I would say if we can get between 5,000 and 10,000 acre feet, it'd be great. You know, I know, again, I really don't have a good feeler for what the appetite is. Yeah, so the question, let me see if I can rephrase it, is we have a certain amount of deliveries coming down Coachella Canal. And I think your question is exactly framed the right way. Is, okay, if we say, you know, get 350,000 acre feet from the Coachella Canal, and we see absolutely no drop in that in the consumptive use, okay, what happens then? And some of those reasons could, so the ag community could have saved, right? You know, this 10,000 acre feet. But then that 10,000 acre feet is used up by the golf community or by the cities or whatever. I would say the intent, I mean, at least from my viewpoint, and I'll ask the question for our funding partners on that. I think if the ag community did your part, you know, you all are gonna get paid, right? I mean, because you signed an agreement with us. I have a hard time seeing that scenario, where one part saves and then the overall usage goes up. Because I think our municipal customers and golf course customers have been pretty steady. In fact, maybe going down a little bit. So I think ag is still like the biggest users in the room. But I'll give it a little bit of thought. I want to say farm deliveries are maybe 280 to like 280 or so, 280,000 acre feet of our 330,000 acre feet allotment, so...
That's majority of it.
Yes, sir, it really is. So that's why, I think, even though I think it's a legitimate question, I just have a hard time seeing the other areas kind of picking up. But you know, something we'll drill down a little bit more into. Yes, sir, Robert?
So the irrigation water availability assessment? Okay, so under this program, for those who are participating, you have to see where you...
Okay, is it still like that, if you all come back, we use half of the water, we use $2,000 of water, and the rest of the $2,000 is waived, or is still there?
So I think that's something we talked about working out. Because if you participated for the poll right now, we calculate that maybe it's done on a fiscal year basis. So if we start the program, let's say in January, then we're gonna use that same lookback period to see how much we're gonna, this is the proposal, to see how much we would waive each month, January through June.
But, I have another question. On that one, since somebody hasn't used the land for a lot of years, but they have been paying the new water, and now they start using it, but they wanted to use it to wash the office, say the water, but it comes up to $2,000. The rest of the $2,000, is waived in the program? Or is it still, we have to give it to the same rate of stuff?
Hey Scott, do you want to come up here and then answer the question?
I'm not sure I haven't answered it.
Okay.
Like when we have, when we have now, the, most of the time, the farmers is doing me, we don't have really guess that we use what, from say 36 hours. Sometimes we are done in 24 hours. So when we ask them to change the meter after time, so they charge, say like $40 right now.
Oh, for the gate charges?
For gate charges. But when, what I do, or my fellow group is doing that, you do, sometimes instead of paying $40, we say, okay, let it run, let it run a little bit more, or put the water a little bit extra. But that incentive goes to the grower, that when they need to turn off the water, there should be no charge, because we want to save water. So that should be compensating or encouraging users.
And I think that's something we can, I mean, I think that's something we would have to talk about, kind of waiving gate charges.
Oh, okay.
So the unscheduled?
Unscheduled, oh.
Okay.
Okay. Thought you were green. Yeah, yeah, right?
If I could weigh in on the first question. The second one, I'm not so sure that's something we can do. But on the first one, for the partial savings and what happens to the availability charge? Makes sense to me if we take the amount of verified savings, let's say it's, you know, you save 100 acre feet, and add that back in as a credit against the availability charge, as if you use that water, so that you don't have to pay that portion of the availability charge. You know, I think that's fair.
Yeah, for those properties.
So you get credit for what you save.
Yeah, for those property doing a seasonal type of program, right?
Right, right.
And do we look at that on a monthly basis? For the partial year, for example?
Right. I'm not quite sure whether I got the total gist of it, because...
Just something so that those online have the benefit of knowing what was discussed.
Do you want to repeat the questions?
And I apologize, we have that mic, but apparently it's not picking up audio as it should. That's why I keep staring up at this. I'm hoping that I channel something to it to make it work.
I probably won't do a good job at this, but I'll try. So there was a question about waiving the unscheduled off fee during this program, and that's something that we could have the board consider. And there was also a question about how to prorate the irrigation, waiver of the irrigation water availability assessment, which for the full fiscal year is not a problem. We'll just look at the verified water savings during the program for those participating. And then we'll have to take, for those who are participating for part of the year or for select months, then we'll have to look at taking to board how we would waive that, the IWA on a partial year basis. So we'll include that as part of our recommendation or what we take to the board when they approve the project. Did I capture that correctly? Okay.
Scott and Robert, I have a quick question for you. I wanted to know if you have a sense of what area each of the meters covers? So that, you know, when you get into the situation where you might have one meter that might cover, say, 200 acres, but maybe 50% of it is in production, are you gonna reference that with the crop surveys to try to make those calculations? Or what steps, if you could just talk a little bit about what steps you're taking, either during the field verifications or to make sure that we don't get into a situation that you just described, Robert, which is, you know, maybe putting a portion of the land on idle, but then putting another portion of it in production. So can you just talk a little bit about what, your thoughts on what we're gonna be doing to try to minimize that?
Right. So Director Schrod, maybe let me see if I can rephrase your question the way I think about it. So you say, okay, you've got 200 acres, and you've got, so obviously it covers a pretty large area. And you may have one section that was in production, and now it's being contemplated, taken out, and then you've got some... Because I think the land doesn't stay static. I mean, you guys are kind of moving around and, you know, planting and so on on different areas. So on this 200 acre of land, okay, you come to us, and you say, okay, let's just say that all of this land was in production, okay? So 200 acres, let's make the math easy. Let's say it's four acre feet per acre. So that'd be a total of 800 acre feet, okay? And you can demonstrate that for the last three years, let's say. So, and you come in and you tell me, okay, I want to take maybe half of this out of production, say 100 acres, right? So from a math standpoint, you should be down to about a 400 acre feet savings or 400 acre feet consumption, half full, half, you know, half empty. But, and so I would be looking at it from that standpoint. Okay, when I go to your meter, and I don't have to get into all the complexity of how this is, you know, this is done, I'm just gonna look at it.
I agree, I agree. And, because that's the way I'm looking at it, right? It's just numbers. And, but that means that we know what that meter covers. We have to know that that meter covers 200 acres, 100 acres, in order to be able to just look at the numbers and not have to figure out whether, you know, maybe you put another portion of it on... Because you're spreading that meter and that water use over an area. But you gotta have a sense of what that area is. And so I'm just trying to figure out if we have that sense through the meter or through the crop surveys in general.
I would say yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
One more question.
Please.
We have like, for example, 200 acres, and we have three meters. We never use the total water, such water, whatever. We always have to pay for unused water.
Right.
So say for 200 acres, it's 20,000 dollars, billing for the total used water. Anyway, we have to pay 20,000 dollars. But suppose we are using only 12,000 dollar water, and $8,000 still is left from there, that we have to pay for not using it. Now, our intention would be that if we don't get credit for that in this program, we use all the water, so we cover our money. But if there is incentive for that, that amount of water that we don't use out of 20,000 dollars, if that is waived, that would be another incentive. if that is waived, that would be another encouragement, too. So, then the water user may go under the law for everybody, including me.
Yeah, I think you threw out a lot of concepts there, which I'm, I'm not sure whether I'm completely grasping, but, uh, I think it has something to do with unused water.
I'm just trying to say, they should charge you every year a tax for the water you have to use, like, profit. If you don't use it, then you still charge it.
Right.
You might as well use it, don't get charged, you know what I mean?
So, that's going to be waived as part of this program? I thi, I think that's something that's been said already.
If, if the land, yeah, is taken out of production, then, yeah, absolutely.
So, what we are producing in all two hundred acres, this, nothing is empty, you know? But the water user is already low because of depth of stream. We don't use that much water that is cessed water. So, for two hundred acres, if we go with a hundred dollars, it's twenty thousand dollar billing per year. But we are using only twelve thousand. But everything, all the land is in production.
I, 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 I think the answer is, once you enroll in the program, it automatically waives your entire.
But he's trying to say something. They charge you, they're charging for acres, land that has a market, and they charge every year for taxes of water after use. That's what he's trying to say, that's, you know, paying, paying taxes every, every year for the land, for the meter use.
Yeah, so, let me ask it this way, Scott, is there, is, do you envision a scenario where there's, uh, uh, the two hundred acres that are fully in production, you take it out of production, and someone would still owe an IWA charge?
I, I think the answer is yes, and under that scenario, and, you know, I'm not in your business, so, I mean, I see it on the billing side, but, I mean, I think if you're, if you, the part that you can serve, so, I mean, if you typically, you, you had mentioned you would typically pay eight thousand dollars. Say your assessment was twenty thousand dollars, and you typically pay, um, eight thousand dollars, the part that we would be looking at waiving would be the water savings part of it already. Um, so that would be looking at that twelve thousand that you, you are paying now, uh, or that you're, I'm sorry, that you're not paying now, um, and waiving it in the future as we see how much water you're conserving. So, there could be situations, I believe, where people, you know, may still owe IWA based on, um, past consumption histories, and I think for, for row crop growers, um, that, that could be an issue. Correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but.
That was why I asked the question about the baseline.
Yeah.
Is the baseline going to be really important?
Absolutely.
To evaluate what we're going to do.
Yeah.
So, we've got, you've got water use, you've got, uh, water availability charges.
Yeah.
You've got cropping programs, you've got all kinds of things. The best thing I heard in here was the fact that we can use some water, because we have got to do some cover crops.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we make cropping decisions based on the use of the ground next to us, and sometimes including our neighbors' use.
Mm-hmm.
So, if ground is fall over certain times of the year, we can't plant a crop next to it. So, it's important to us to be able to, to make sure that we're not blowing sand everywhere and ruining crops, so.
Sure.
I'll give you kudos, you know, at least we know we can use some of it. When I saw the lockout, I went, oh, no. No water, and after the crop for five years, we're going to have a mess. So, yeah, the baseline's going to be critical for us to be able to decide whether we can use it.
Okay.
Because everything happens so differently on, on a row crop.
And I think we can work on making, you know, we'll, let's make that request through customer billing. If you're interested in participating, we'll contact you, and we can work out the, we'll go back and run the records in our billing system and make sure we all agree on the numbers. I'm, right? Um, and did I fully answer your question? I wanted to make sure about the. You, I don't think you liked the answer, but I, I answered it. Yeah.
We think it's very simple, you know, it's encouragement. Once we have eight, say my valley is twelve thousand dollars, I am paying eight thousand for not using the water, you know?
Yeah.
Now, now I'm being practical, my intention would be to use that water too somewhere, instead of conserving it, you know? So, if, anyway, I'm paying for it, why should I conserve it? But is that conservation is considered under that, for twelve thousand dollars, what we reduce further? Or it is from the cessed water?
So, it'd be from the twelve thousand that you're, that is being waived?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But of that, if we have to pay anyway, if that is not considered in this program, I'm just, as an example, nobody would like to, I think twelve thousand, twelve thousand uses for me is optimum right now.
Mm-hmm.
If I go under it, I have to make some land out of crop to see the benefit of that. That will be kind of very expensive for me.
Mm-hmm.
And on the other hand, in this valley, are we encouraging the farming practices or are we discouraging it? So, to get the benefit of water being put towards fields out of crop, does that benefit enough for us, for the landowners to provide? And they have other matters, too, and they are.
Yeah.
Scott, I, I, you know, I, I think he brings up a good point about, you know, if for whatever reason he, you know, someone still owes, let's say, the eight thousand dollars worth of the IWA, and, uh, it's either, you know, you use it or you lose it, you're still going to pay for it. Uh, and then we're allowing, under some of these scenarios where you can track the usage by month, and you just said that we wouldn't ding folks if they come up short, right? If someone said, you know, we're going to, we're going to save two hundred acre feet, but then when you do the calculation, at the end of the payment, the installments, through your verification, you only show savings of, let's say, one ninety-two, right? Because they used, um, the, you know, in this case, you'd be using the, whatever the amount was, right? You'd be using it anyways, and maybe that, that's the wiggle room that you have to play with, so that you use the water, because otherwise you would have paid for it anyways, and then you don't get dinged through the, uh, process of not fully saving the two hundred. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but that, so that small amount that was used would offset the IWA anyway.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
They're going to, they're going to, they're going to try to fix, they're going to try to use it if they're going to pay for it anyways.
Okay.
So, I mean, does that make sense? I mean, I, I think that's the, the issue is that.
Yeah, and I think as we bring, as we develop this and bring it to the board for a recommendation, we include that, and I, you know, we'll, this would be out there for public comment beforehand, right? I mean, so, you know, as we, if you have recommend, if you have public comments, then I would encourage you to comment on the, the proposal that's going to the board, um, if you have, would like to see other, um, some changes to it. Is that fair? Okay.
So, on the other hand, the thing I say, the pre-order, pre-termination order charges, say I have to, for example, I have two hundred inches order. My order is done, say, by ten o'clock at night instead of tomorrow morning. If me or anybody else suddenly will call at ten o'clock, says, I'm done, my water is, we can terminate my order. That should be encouragement to the user, that free of charge to terminate it. Yes, if we want to turn it on, that charge is okay when we do unschedule on. But when there is, if we want to save water, uh, then if they're unscheduled off, that should be free of charge. You see how much water we will save on that.
Yeah, and that, um, we could certainly take that into consideration, that, that, the one concern on the unscheduled offs is that, that's a, a significant driver of staff time and cost, and that was.
Could Matt pay for that?
Uh, I don't know. We, we could. We could talk to them about that, but.
Saving it costs more than the driver's, driver's driving time. A two hundred acres, two hundred feet, two hundred inches of water, we save for ten hours. And what say the drivers, driving one hour or half hour?
Yeah, we could certainly look at it.
That would be a big consideration.
Okay.
It's just encouragement to the user.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I think we have budgeted like ninety minutes for this, and, uh, you know, our respect for everybody's time. I mean, clearly, you know, I think gauging from, you know, the level of interest and questions and so on, um, you know, I don't think staff has all the answers, um, but I think you've definitely given us a lot to, uh, think about. And what I would say is, um, you know, maybe a couple of things of, you know, maybe kind of fleshing out some of these additional points before we, uh, you know, bring a proposal, you know, for the board for consideration in June. You know, if, if you want us to specifically, you know, address, you know, your questions, you know, please, you know, let us know. I think we have your contact info, but I, you know, I, I don't know whose, you know, address belongs to whom, uh, and I want to make sure that we capture, you know, all these, uh, you know, the, the good comments. Um, so, you know, e, either you can let us know what your, you know, your contact info are, and we'll, you know, maybe reach back out to you, or, uh, you can use this, you know, generalized, um, email up here that's, uh, displayed. Uh, I think better yet, just send us, you know, the, the info and just say, hey, I was at your, um, May seventeenth workshop, I had this question, uh, so I'd like for you to kind of consider these, you know, following points. Um, you know, that might be a better way of doing it, but again, I think we want to try to be as flexible as we can to, uh, to, you know, help make this program a success. Again, you know, this is a voluntary program, so, you know, we know that, you know, that it takes, you know, a lot of cooperation on, you know, from the community's part. So, you know, we do appreciate the, uh, you know, the feedback and, you know, all the comments and so on, so. Anyways, I guess with that, um.
Robert, before we officially adjourn, I do want to give the opportunity, I know we do have one member in particular that wants to provide comment, um, in person, but I also want to reach out again to those on Zoom to ask if there's any comments, and then we did, I mentioned it via chat to those on Zoom. We did have a sign-in sheet here, but for those online, um, I sent you an email, it's also on the screen. Please, um, if you, if you wouldn't mind sending your contact information, your name, email address, and a good contact phone number for us, and you can also, as Robert mentioned, send in any questions via that. So, if anybody in the room has not signed the sign-in sheet, please raise your hand, and, uh, Petya will come by and, uh, ask for that, and then Ms. Calamanis, we have you, um, in person that would like to provide public comment. Thank you. I'm talking too much.
I apologize, my name's Alana Calamanis, and, um, we maybe should have gone in the beginning, but, uh, what I wanted to talk about, and I apologize to the farmers here, is another way of trying to save water. Um, the State Water Resources Board has announced an emergency hearing where the, where they look to be cutting ten to twenty percent of the water to California, to water agencies like CVW. I think this gives the board here an unprecedented opportunity to really affect how we use water in the desert. Cutting golf courses ten to twenty percent will make a significant impact, since golf courses are what caused the water drop through two thousand and nine. Turf reduction is very expensive and takes a long time, but going and cutting ten to twenty percent is an immediate impact, and, uh, we don't need the rough to be watered, you know? Let them get golf lessons and, and try to keep the ball on the fairway. This can also give you the opportunity for really putting a moratorium until two thousand twenty-three for all the wave parks and lagoons, until we understand more about what is happening with the Colorado River water. And it gives an opportunity to stop how we calculate evaporation from wave pools. We have real reference data from Wadi Surf Park, which is in the United Arab Emirates in the desert. They import desalinated water from the sea so that they can use it, so they're very cognizant about their evaporation. They have a three acre, two point eight million gallon wave pool. They top off in the summer, between May first and November first, forty thousand gallons of water a day, and from December to April, ten thousand gallons of water a day. But they cool their water in the pool down to eighty-six degrees in the summer and warm it to seventy-four degrees in the winter. So, uh, what we need to relook at is the current CVWD evaporation models used for the wave pools, which only, which use the two thousand and five evaporation numbers, when we only had ninety-nine days over a hundred and not as hot, and as you all know, the wind events, and you farmers know with the sand blowing all over the place, uh, that's going to contribute significantly to evaporation, which wasn't used to calculate the CVW evaporation for these wave pools. So, if, as you look at conservation, we really need to look at withholding water from the golf courses and put a halt to our three surfing pools and the, and the swimming lagoon in the desert. Thank you very much.
And then, Robert, I don't see any hands or any comments.
Is it, your hand raised? Derek Long should be raising.
Yeah, I don't have anybody at this time. Is there anything you want to say regarding the survey at this time?
Yeah, um, I guess before we, you know, uh, break up, again, thank you very much for your participation. Um, and, um, you know, please take a survey with you if you don't have one, if you haven't filled it out yet. Uh, we are looking for that input, uh, so, you know, to see if we might have a chance of moving this program forward. And again, thank you very much for, you know, all your, uh, participation today, and hopefully we'll, you know, see each other, uh, in near future on this. Thank you.
Thank you.